Good evening, and I'd like to call this meeting of the Southbridge School Committee to order on Tuesday, December 14th at 7:01. I'm going to go ahead and do roll call. Erin DeMello.
Present.
Martina Shea.
Present.
Kathy LaPraiori.
Present.
Timothy Messier.
Present.
And Spiro Tomo is absent. We're going to go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Two, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Input. Is there any member of the public who would like to address the school committee? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Chairperson's Announcements. Unfortunately, I do not have any announcements for this evening, other than welcome to Ms. Tracy from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So with that, we're going to move on to the Agenda Item Number Five, Presentations, which is seventy on Chapter Seventy by Ms. Tracy Noggin.
Good evening. It's good to be here with you all. It's loud, huh?
I heard it.
Okay. Maybe I just think it should be louder than it is. So I'm glad to be with you all this evening. One of the things that I do for the association, as a number of you know, I'm actually the Field Director for Central Massachusetts. I have everything more or less east of 495 out to the Connecticut River Valley. But you are in luck, because I also happen to be the one who specializes in school finance. And so I'm glad to have an opportunity tonight to have a conversation with you about, in particular, how state funding impacts your district, how it comes together, but then also what that ends up meaning in terms of how your district funds itself over and above the Chapter Seventy program. And yes, we're going to do this with Legos, because I think that that potentially can give you a visual. So we talk a lot in education about Chapter Seventy. We use it as sort of a shorthand. And when we talk about Chapter Seventy, the shorthand that we're using is we're talking about Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy. It actually is the general law that covers school funding in Massachusetts, is Chapter Seventy of the Massachusetts General Law. And I've given you here the opening section of Mass. General Law, Chapter Seventy in Section One, because it outlines what it is that actually is happening within MGL Seventy, which is that this section of the law, and generally speaking, the intent of the legislature, is for the state to have a system that applies to the entire state of Massachusetts in which there is what it calls a fair and adequate minimum funding per pupil. And then there is a standard calculation across the state as to then how that funding comes together in terms of the balance between local funding and state funding. So that is effectively what Mass. General Law, Chapter Seventy, does within that chapter. But it also is effectively then what the funding of Chapter Seventy, the shorthand that we use it for, is actually happening for those who are for districts that use it. So in other words, when we talk about Chapter Seventy, we're just simply talking about K through twelve state funding for education. It certainly is one of the pieces of lingo that we tend to use within Massachusetts education. So as we go through this, by the way, if as we go through, you have questions, by all means, please stop me at any point. There are parts of this that are more complicated than others, and I'd rather that if something were unclear, you felt that you could stop me at any point. So the first thing that happens when the state actually does this calculation, and in fact, going back to the creation of Chapter Seventy, which happened in 1993 as a result of the Education Reform Law, is that the state put together a list effectively of what it takes in order to educate a child in Massachusetts. And this is a list that I'm sure that if you sat down and had to come up with a list of what you needed in order to run a school district, you would come up with some of these same kinds of things, right? Everybody thinks of teachers. Eventually, we remember that we probably need a building. But then you also need things like to keep the lights on, to keep the building heated. It is good to have other kinds of services besides teachers. You do need some oversight of the educational system. And then we also need things like health insurance. So this is actually what the list is. I put this over on the side so you can actually see what the subdivisions are that are within this. What the state has done is they have calculated a dollar amount for each of those categories per pupil, and then taken those together, and that is what actually then becomes the base foundation rate. Now, those internal dollar amounts vary a bit according to that student's grade level in school. And so effectively then, year by year, there is an issuance of a foundation base rate that the state says, here is the fair and adequate minimum per pupil amount for students who are in, as you see here, pre-K, kindergarten if it's half-day, full-day kindergarten, elementary and middle, and high school. You will notice, of course, that there's some variation among them. Generally speaking, this has to do with different assumptions about different calculations within them. Obviously, the vocational rate is the highest, making a nod to the need for smaller class sizes, and also the need for more expensive equipment. So that's what that is. Now, to this base foundation rate, the state then acknowledges two additional costs. It acknowledges the fact that English learners have additional needs that need to be funded, and it acknowledges that low-income students have additional needs that need to be funded. So to each student who has that base foundation rate, who is also then low-income, an English learner, or both, there is an additional increment that is placed on top of that, thus the Legos. And for FY twenty-two, the current fiscal year, the rates for English learners are what you see here. Now, notice that this is subdivided by the grade level that the students are in. This is the first thing that I'm going to flag for you, as something that is changing as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. So up until, not just the passage of the SOA in 2019, but up until the implementation of the SOA in FY twenty-two, these rates all were changing only by inflation. There's an inflation rate which is actually applied to the foundation budget every year. But as part of the Student Opportunity Act, one of the changes that is going to be happening is, first of all, within the base foundation rate, so the previous slide, there's going to be a bigger increase within those categories attributable to health insurance. We know that health insurance costs are significantly higher than the average inflation rate. And then the second thing that's going to be changing is an acknowledgement that the cost that we have assumed effectively for English learners is higher than what has been included here in the foundation budget. And so these numbers are going to be increasing over and above the inflation rate over the next five years. Yes?
Two quick questions.
Sure.
One is health insurance. We're talking about health insurance for students or for teachers?
Health insurance for your employees.
Okay.
And that's part of the calculation of the base foundation rate. The fact that you, as a district, have to supply health insurance for your employees is part of that calculation.
Great. And then the other question is, how long are students considered English learners? Are they considered English learners their full life?
For as long as they're actually tested as English learners. So students in Massachusetts effectively, when they take the access test, eventually test out of being considered an English learner, according to the state.
So when they get a certain proficiency level?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and that is the calculation that's actually used here, is that those numbers are what are included. To that point, though, let me note that you'll notice that there's a differential in terms of the dollar amount here. Eventually, what is going to happen over the period of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act is that eventually, the category that is going to be the highest dollar amount is actually the high school students. And this, of course, is an acknowledgement of the fact that if you have a student who is an English learner in high school, you first of all have a significantly shorter period of time that that student kind of left. And secondly, also, in some cases, it may actually be more challenging for that student to actually achieve proficiency in English. Not always, but in some cases. The acknowledgement there is that it can be more expensive to ensure that that student has the support that that student needs. So eventually, that is going to be a shift that you'll see happening over the next five years in terms of the rate for the English learners. And then the third thing that is changing as a result of the Student Opportunity Act is the poverty calculation. This, again, is an increment that's put on top of the base foundation rate for any student who is considered low-income within your district. Now, there's been a number of changes to how that is counted over the past, say, five years or so. Currently, and moving forward, so for FY twenty-three, let's say, not in this current year, but FY twenty-three, what it will be is it will be all students who effectively receive state services. They're in Mass. Health, they're in SNAP, they're in TANF. Those students are already in a state database that is cross-referenced with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's database. And when there is a match, those students are counted as low-income. As part of the Student Opportunity Act, a responsibility that was put on the department was for them to find a way of capturing more of the students who actually were really poor. In many cases, there certainly have been cases in which students were not being found within those databases. So what has happened for the year going forward, not this current fiscal year, but for next fiscal year, is that the state has provided for a way for districts to allow for families to fill out a form, that the districts effectively have gone through their own roles and said, we have some families who we think may actually be, this may be applicable to, those families can fill out a form, and if, in fact, it is the case, those families will then be added to this list. So there has been an increase actually in the low-income count, both for the state and also for many districts, as a result of that. Now, the thing that's happening here is that over the next five years, again, you will see these rates increase, really actually very substantially. Eventually, Category Twelve here is going to be equal to the middle-school rate of the base foundation rate. Thus, effectively, a student who is low-income in a district which has the highest concentration of poverty will be counted effectively kind of double the amount in terms of the foundation. Yes?
Excuse me. So I was under the assumption that low-income was determined based on your free and reduced lunch rates?
So that was originally the case until 2017. So that, for a very, very, very long time, was the case, that it was based on who had filled out a form for free or reduced lunch. What happened was, as a result of a revision in the federal school lunch law, districts that had a high rate of students who were considered free or reduced lunch could move to community eligibility, which was, the district then actually set itself up with that matching program of, we've got students who are in Mass. Health, we've got students who effectively are considered low-income from other categories. If those rates were high enough, the district could potentially make the math work such that they could provide free lunch for all of their students. As a result of that federal law, a number of the larger urban districts moved pretty quickly to community eligibility, which was great, except it meant that they stopped collecting free and reduced lunch forms. And that had happened 2015, 2016. The state started to get a little edgy, because they were kind of running these two categories then of low-income, of like the districts that were counting, and the districts that were still kind of sitting on the previous count. And in seventeen, the state said, that's enough, we can't keep doing this. Everyone is moving to their community eligibility counts. So doesn't have any impact on what we're doing for lunch, but we're going to do this database matching for every district, and that's what's going to make the change. Now, what that meant, which sort of, I guess, is implied with the change that's happening now, is that there were substantial number of districts, and frankly, the entire state, lost kids who were low-income, right? There were families that might have filled out the form but weren't actually signed up for Mass. Health, or didn't actually ever sign up for SNAP benefits, or that kind of thing. A bunch of those districts complained to the state and said, we've got kids that we know are poor, they're not actually being counted. And so part of the Student Opportunity Act, when it was passed in nineteen, was effectively to go to the department and say, look, you got to figure this out. Like, it's not okay for us to have this kind of system. The state then kind of ran a two-year stopgap of, you either get what was your free and reduced lunch percentage, or your community eligibility count, whichever is higher. They did that in twenty, twenty was kind of a flat year anyway. They did it for this year, that's actually what's happening right now. But then for twenty-three, they've already implemented this. Yes, that counts, but then also districts can go out to the families that they think aren't actually being captured, have them fill out a form, and actually get those put through the database as well.
Thank you.
Yes. And that has made a difference in terms of the count. You're going to see that in a second, actually, because I have your data here. So note, by the way, that this is particularly progressive towards the end. This is intentionally designed to be particularly supportive of districts that have a very high rate of poverty, which, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, includes your own. Special education. Special education is the exception. Special education is not based on an actual count of students. So everything I've set up until now is based on actual bodies who sit in actual desks in your town. Special education, that is not the case with. In this case, what the state does is it runs a flat percentage of your whole enrollment. For out-of-district special education, it says that's 1% of your student population. For in-district special education, for this current year, it says it's 3.83%. If you were a VOTAC, it would be 4.83. This number, the 3.83, is the fourth part of the Student Opportunity Act. It's the fourth thing that's changing. This is phasing in over the next five years. It will eventually be 4% when we get to the fifth year. So the count effectively then, or the count, to put it in quotation marks, will be phased in over the next several years. Now, I preface all of that because sometimes people get really excited when they see the dollar amounts, because of course, obviously, these are significantly higher. But they have nothing to do with the number of students that you have on IUPs, nothing to do with the number of students who are receiving special education services. The percentages are based on the state's look into their own database as to what would happen if we took all of the students who were receiving services, most of whom, of course, received services only part-time, right? They largely are in integrated classrooms, and made those students full-time special education students, the calculation of the state is that that would effectively equal 4% of the statewide population of students. We can dispute that, we can like it, we can not like it, but that is what it is. So again, just to note that that's actually where this is coming from. So if you're putting those pieces together, the first thing that happens is that you get the base foundation calculations, right? How many kindergartners do you have? Here's a dollar amount. How many elementary school students do you have? Here's a dollar amount, and so forth, through. To that gets added, how many English learners do you have of each of those three grade levels? Again, multiplied by those three dollar amounts. Same thing with your low increment. Your low increment is based on the percentage of students that you have that are considered low-income, and then multiplied by the number of students that that actually is. And then the special education percentage times your district enrollment. And that then will give you your foundation budget. So this is your current FY twenty-two foundation budget, as calculated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education this past June. So the DESI actually calculates these twice, does it once when the governor's budget comes out in January, and then once we finagle our way through the legislative process, there inevitably are some changes, not always in terms of this, but sometimes in terms of some other pieces. And then DESI actually then sends out a second calculation in July. And this comes right from the July calculation. This is not exactly what the spreadsheet looks like, but this gives you all of the data within the spreadsheet. You can see here the count of your students, the dollar amount per pupil, and then the dollar amount that that totals. Couple of notes here. I did drop any categories that you didn't have anyone in, so you run full-day K, you don't need a line for half-day K, you don't have vocational students. Please also note that anything that's in italics, those students are already included in the count above, right? They all have a base foundation count. So don't try to total the enrollment column all the way down. That's not actually how that math works. And then the $31.9 million is what the state would say, per Mass. General Law, Chapter Seventy, is the fair and adequate minimum that's needed to fund the Southbridge Public Schools for FY twenty-three. You will note, by the way, that I continue to use the fair and adequate minimum quotation, because we can talk about whether or not that's actually accurate at some point. Now, I wanted to call your attention to a couple of data points that really matter. When the state calculates your foundation budget, there historically have really only been two ways that it changes. The first is the inflation rate, which changes from year to year, and the second is your actual student enrollment. So that's, first of all, just the total enrollment, how many students do you have overall? And then the enrollment with each of those categories, right? Do you have more English learners? That's going to boost that increment. Do you have fewer kids who are low-income? That's going to drop that increment. Everything except for your special education, which of course, only depends on your overall enrollment. So I thought it would be useful, this goes back to 1984, which is as far back as the state's database goes, which is exactly when education reform actually came into existence. This is actually what your overall student enrollment has looked like since 1994. And I always find this informative for districts to look at. Most of us who've been around districts probably have some sense as to what our kind of recent trend is, but what has the trend looked like over time? And then what does that end up actually meaning for your district? So really, effectively here, this is kind of the story of Southbridge in terms of the enrollment for K through twelve education. Keeping in mind that, you know, some of the high heights here are up around almost 2,700 students. You're now at about 1,800 students. You have been dropping a bit over the past number of years, although I would say that really the big drop actually happened in the early 2000s. That is something that impacts your foundation budget, right? That actually, the number of students that are actually sitting in seats impacts the calculation that the state makes in terms of the dollar amounts that are needed. The other thing that I thought was really, really interesting, and this is, to me, as someone who lives in Worcester, central Massachusetts person, who's certainly been paying attention to Southbridge for a bit, to me, these numbers were actually some of the ones that were really most telling. So first of all, purple here is English learners. Going back again to 1994, you had English learner numbers of 7%, 6%. You had a couple of high years in there of 12 or 13%. But pretty steady, really, all the way into almost 2010, when you then start to see more of a steady increase, occasional drop back, but you've had several years in which, almost fully a quarter of your student body are considered English learners. And remember, that's not anyone whose first language isn't English, that's anyone who currently is considered by the state to still be learning English, which is a different calculation. Your first language, other than English, numbers, of course, are considerably higher. So I thought, first of all, that that's a really important story first, yes, in terms of the dollar amounts, but in terms of what the district then is needing to provide for students, that's a substantial change, to go from a 7% English learner population to one that's more like 20% or 24%. The special education has stayed fairly constant. There's been a couple of bounces down, but by and large, your special education population has stayed around 22 or 23%. So about a fifth of your students are considered special education. It's not atypical, I would say that for most districts, it's somewhere around 18%. So you're not really far off in terms of that. And then this is the one that I actually, when I plotted it out and opened up the chart again, really, really, kind of almost took my breath away. Back in 1994, your low-income count was less than 40%. Right now, your low-income count is 84.6%. That is a huge, huge, huge difference for this district to be coping with. And as someone who has, you know, been concerned about some of the decisions the state has made around districts like Southbridge, to me, this graph tells an incredible story, particularly when you then think about the fact that the state, for the past 20 years, has been catastrophically underfunding districts like Southbridge that are predominantly dependent on state aid. So you are a low-income district in a town that is unable to fully fund its schools, as we'll talk about in a second, that has had this kind of change in your student body population. That's huge in terms of the changes that this district has seen. Yes?
I'm just wondering how much of that poverty level statistic could be affected by the rising point at which we're determining the poverty level?
So that's what the green star is, right? So the drop that you see from 14 to 15 is when you actually effectively flipped over to community eligibility. So that's where you lost the numbers. The steady gain since then has been the state attempting to capture more and more of those students again. So what I also will tell you is that if you look at the state's calculations in terms of how many of the students in the state of Massachusetts are considered low-income, your trajectory here does not track the state's. This is something beyond that that's happening.
Okay.
I'm really glad you asked that question, and I think it's an important one. Particularly, honestly, if you look at from 2019 forward, I mean, that increase there from 70%, a full 15% within these last handful of years, that's huge. That's huge. So in terms of, if you ask me which chart is kind of burned into my brain after putting this presentation together, really, it's your low-income count that has stayed with me. So now, those numbers together are what create your foundation budget, right? The number of students you have, the number of students you have that are English learners, the number that are low-income, and then with the increment, that is the percentage that is described as special education. And I thought it would be useful just for you to get some picture here of what does that end up meaning in terms of your foundation budget, what the state considers a fair and adequate minimum. So for the current year, we talked about $31.9 million, but last year it was $28.7. There have been years where it's been $28 or $27, $27 million. And then looking back towards FY eleven and FY twelve, you're talking more like $22 or $23 million. Do you notice, though, and this is actually the thing, and I'm going to say this a couple of times in different ways, that from last year to this year, the jump in your foundation budget here is not your enrollment, it's partly that your poverty count increased, but more than anything else, it's the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Because we did not have the Student Opportunity Act implemented last year, we saw a big jump in the dollar amounts ascribed to each student who is considered low-income. That is that jump in your foundation budget. That's entirely where that came from. So to me, part of your story, in terms of your budget, is that you are one of the districts for which the Student Opportunity Act, first of all, was intended. And secondly, you are already seeing, even if it's not coming through in dollars of aid received yet, although I will show you in a second that it is actually, from here on out, those numbers are only going to continue to add up, partly because your poverty count is so high, which puts you all the way over in Category Twelve. Now, I do also want to note that something that's been happening over those years, in particular, in which your poverty count has particularly gone through the ceiling, is that while the state was sort of dithering about whether or not they were going to pass the Student Opportunity Act, right? Foundation Budget recommission came out with a report back in 2015, saying, you know, you guys revised the foundation budget in 1993, and you haven't done anything since. What has been happening since then is that Massachusetts effectively has been kind of falling off the chart in terms of the two things that the foundation budget was designed to make up for. Chapter Seventy is supposed to be a school funding system that provides adequacy and provides progressive funding. It's supposed to provide additional support for districts and for students that most need it, in districts that are least able to provide it. This chart actually shows you what has been happening to the progressivity of the Massachusetts Foundation formula as a state. In terms of how well is Massachusetts doing for making sure that their most needy students have the most amount of support, we've kind of fallen off the wagon since 2015 there, at the end of the chart. This chart and the information here is taken from a report that actually just came out last week. Every couple of years, the Shanker Institute issues the Adequacy and Fairness of State School Finance Systems. This is their most recent edition, which is based on 2019 finance data. Now, why that's key for Massachusetts is 19 was the last year that we did this prior to the signing of the Student Opportunity Act. Now, 20, we kind of considered a nothing year, because we had the pandemic and nothing changed in terms of the budget. But 2019 is sort of the last regular year, and this is really a demonstration of how badly this was needed. Just to read these two pieces of information, Massachusetts ranks 43rd in the nation out of 49 in terms of effort, which is, given how much we have as a state, how much of that do we put towards schools? The answer is not as much as most other places. And we're 42nd out of 49 in terms of progressivity. Now, in Now, in particular, the progressivity will change as the Student Opportunity Act is implemented, but I do think that it's important for you all, and really any district that looks like yours, to know these numbers, because this is the reality that you have been living, which is that you've had increasing amounts of need, you have had, what everybody has told you is increasing amounts of funding, but when you actually look at the amount the state has been putting towards this, how hard the state has been trying, and whether or not the dollars are actually following the need, the data says that it hasn't actually been coming through. So I think that's really important for you to know. Now, this is actually the, the old slide, but what I'm going to talk to you about here is, given that $31.9 million, that is supposed to be your fair and adequate minimum, how much of that then, looking at the second half of section one of chapter 71, is supposed to come from the town of Southbridge? And how much of that is going to come from the state? So the first thing that I think is good for everybody to understand is that the state has a basic understanding, when it goes to calculate the amount of funding for the entire Commonwealth, that the foundation budget for all K through 12 students in Massachusetts that are in public and charter systems is going to be funded 59% from local funding and 41% from state funding. So if you take the foundation budget for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the state says, okay, we're going to pick up 41% of that, and it's going to be up to cities and towns to pick up the other 59. Now, that's the state calculation. How much, how that breaks down locally is what actually then happens next in terms of the calculation. So given that overall, the state then looks at two things. It starts by looking at the property wealth in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The term that, that we use here is equalized valuation, which is the cash value of all taxable property in each municipality. The state adds that up from DOR, the whole state, and then effectively does the same thing for income, taking a look at the income that was derived annually from Department of Revenue filings. So how much income is there in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? The state takes those two statewide numbers, and it does a little calculation from, if you remember from when you learned decimals, you might be familiar with, it sets them equal to each other. Okay? So what that means is that one of these is going to be less than one, and one of them is going to be more than one, that's how you set them equal to each other. Now, out of this calculation, the only thing the state's going to walk away with that matters for the local level is these two decimals, because it's going to take these two decimals and it's going to then apply those to the town level income and property for every city and town in Massachusetts. And that's how we end up with what it says is, it's a standard applicable calculation to every city and town, because it uses the same decimals for everybody regardless of their level of income and wealth. So let's walk you through how it works. So when the state is actually trying to figure out how much Southbridge can afford to contribute, the first thing it's going to look at is your equalized property valuation, right? Just for the town of Southbridge, and it's going to look at your income, again, just for the town of Southbridge. You'll notice that these are a little bit out of phase, so this is what they did for 2000, for FY22, the current fiscal year. They used the 2020 equalized property valuation and the 2019 income valuation. The reason is sometimes people dispute their taxes and the state tries to have something that's not being changed too much. It then multiplies each of those by those standum, standard decimals that we talked about, right? That they derived from the state calculation. The uniform property percentage, the uniform income percentage. Then given those calculations, you end up with the local effort from property wealth and the local effort for income for the town of Southbridge. So what is that, just to show you that a different way, okay? The, the map here, $1.2 billion in property wealth, $369 million in income wealth, times that standard percentage in both cases, and then take those two dollar amounts and add them together, that gives you what's known as your combined effort yield. Now, if you'll allow me to geek out for a second. The combined effort yield is actually kind of neat, because what it mean, what it does is it gives us a way of measuring ability to contribute for districts that have, for towns that are totally not like each other, right? There's no way to compare the town of Southbridge's ability to contribute to the city of Worcester's ability to contribute, or the city of Boston's ability to contribute. But if you take a town's combined effort yield and you compare it to the foundation budget of that city or town and set that up as a ratio, you then have a way of saying, here's how much this town can contribute to their local school district. And that actually give you, gives you a standard way of having the conversation. There are districts that their combined effort yield multiple times exceeds their school's foundation budget. If you look at this, I don't need to tell you any further, right? $31.9 million was your foundation budget, the state's saying that you can afford 9.2. Guess what? That's why we have chapter 78, okay? But do keep in mind, this is a way of being able to have a standard conversation across the state to talk about need versus ability to contribute. And this is really that section one of chapter 70, the standard local funding effort applicable to every city and town in the Commonwealth. So, in terms of getting, I've got a, a $9 million that's just living here, it's not phasing in as it should, sorry about that. So the first thing that's going to happen is that the state, we're going to take that $9 million and we're going to compare it to 82.5% of your foundation budget, which is the most that any town or city has to contribute towards their district. The, the state effectively puts a cap on it, now you can contribute more, but in terms of what you're required to contribute. The state then looks at how much Southbridge had to contribute last year, and then it looks at how close that is to your target contribution. So effectively then what's going to happen is the state then does a calculation to say, given the town of Southbridge's ability to contribute this current year, what did you contribute last year? What has happened in your local economy? That actually gives you your target, and then the state will bring you up or down to say, well, here's how much you actually contribute, can contribute. You'll notice that this is actually really not all that different from what you already had. These are what the numbers actually are. So it's a, it's a matter of $13,000 in terms of the change. Your economy incidentally grew this past year 2.96%, so that's sort of the additional little calculation that's happening in here, that's the municipal revenue calculation in terms of looking at how much was required last year versus how much is required this So in terms of putting the pieces together, right? To get to your foundation budget, the state always starts with your local ability to contribute. What this, what the Commonwealth is going to do is it says that you have to contribute that amount to your local schools. Now you'll notice that when we're talking about K through 12 for the town, for the Southbridge Public Schools, you aren't getting the whole $9 million we just talked about, because some of that $9 million is your local contribution to Bay Path. They get calculated into the town's foundation budget too. So there is a, the foundation budget for the town of Southbridge exists separate from the Southbridge Public Schools, because the town of Southbridge feeds into two different foundation budgets. So the first thing though, to put together your K through 12 foundation budget, is your local required contribution, which is $8.2 million. And then the state fills in the gap in order to get you up to your 31, which is how you end up getting $23 million in chapter 78. Okay? So that's how you get to your foundation budget. You are a district that is, of course, predominantly state-funded, but the state is saying that they are aiming to, for you to be contributing 25.89% this current fiscal year toward your foundation budget, the state fills in the gap. Now, one of the things that I like to illustrate for districts, particularly now that we are having this sort of changing time in how these pieces come together, is, is some look at how those two pieces have varied over time, and in particular, how those two pieces have changed, again, looking back at your enrollment changes, and what that ended up meaning for your state contribution. And what I mean is this, last year if I had done this presentation for you, I would have needed to include a section where we talked about hold harmless and minimum contribution, okay? So the state's general principle underlying chapter 78 is that if you are a district where, once we do that calculation we just did, the amount of chapter 78 that you would be getting for this fiscal year is less than you would have gotten last fiscal year, the state will not give you less. The state will give you the same amount, and then written right into the Student Opportunity Act is a requirement that the state then increase any district that's getting that same amount by a $30 per pupil increase. That was your state last year. It is not where you're at this year. And again, the reason, and this is actually why I gave you your foundation budget, is because of the increase in your foundation budget, which is a result of the increase in that calculation due to the Student Opportunity Act. So if we look at what your local required contribution has been over time, and then we add to that the chapter 78, you'll see that obviously the chapter 78 increases have been the part that has been particularly growing, more so than the local contribution. First, I think that's always a healthy thing for school committees to know, we do tend to sometimes get some pushback from our municipal side about increases on their side, there are always increases on their side, but generally in districts like yours, where you are predominantly state-funded, largely most of the increase is usually being picked up by the state. And then this is the part that I think is particularly important, because this is actually where your foundation budget is. And if you look back at FY20, your foundation budget was less than the amount that your local contribution plus your state aid was. That's what was, the, the top of the yellow bar is, is what your state, what the state calls your required net school spending. How much are you required as a town to spend on K through 12 education? Most of the time, as you see, the green line hits the top of the yellow bar, and that's because you're 100% funded educate, funded district. But in FY20, because the state wanted to make sure that you didn't receive less aid than you'd gotten the year before, again, I, that has to do with your declining enrollment, they had funded you at the same level. Your net school spending was above your foundation budget, you were required to spend more than your foundation budget, because the state had increased your state aid anyway. But if you notice then, the total yellow bars have now continued to go up, again, mostly because of the increases in those internal dollar calculations, because the phase in the new state law, and your foundation budget is going up actually first with it. And so you're not a hold harmless district. So rather than being a district that's seeing, I think, I want to say that it was something like $78,000 was an increase in state aid that you had won of these recent years, you're instead seeing increases that are in the $100,000 additional kinds of amounts, and those are going to be continuing to increase at greater extents over the next several years because of the Student Opportunity Act. So I did want to actually add that part, because you're not necessarily seeing the dollar increases yet in terms of the chapter 78, but you are one of the districts, and I'm going to point to you, because like, I, I've been making this argument to districts across the state, that this is something that's going to happen. There are districts that are going to pull themselves out of a hold harmless as a result of SOA. You are the first district where I run the calculation and said, aha, it actually just happened. So that is going to make a difference to you in terms of what your state aid is going to look like in the coming years.
I have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
So, can you go back to that last slide?
Sorry. There we go.
That's okay. So I'm looking at the foundation budget. So if we, you know, I know this might sound crazy, but I'm just curious. So the local contributions, right, if, if we voted on a, on a budget to increase our local contributions, would the state take funding away from?
No.
So that would exceed, that would exceed the?
Yes. And so in fact, you're, you're, you, you are looking ahead to what this slide is actually going to be. So for your, for your FY21, which was last fiscal year, because I always want to do one where the numbers are all settled, this is actually what your calculation looked like. You had $8.2 million that were your required local contribution. You had 23.6, that was the state aid. You actually had $6.4 million that came in your revolving fund. Actually, you know what? I think I might be using 22 numbers here on the bottom, but you'll still get the idea. The, the green and the top bar are going to be the 21 numbers. I, I'll need to go back and redo this chart, because I think I'm using this year's numbers on the bottom. You actually exceeded required net school spending by $1.4 million in local contribution. So the town of Southbridge contributed an additional $1.4 million over what they were required to. Now, to get super technical, that you then spent within the categories that are recognized by net school spending, they're probably, because I know that you run things like school buses, which doesn't count towards net school spending, was actually additional above this. But yes, most towns and cities in Massachusetts contribute more than they are required to, to their local school districts. In fact, in 2019, the statewide average was 31%. Now, obviously that's not the reality in which you live, but 31% over their required local contributions.
So, so then the state, when they calculate the, when they calculate what the, the spending needs to be year after year after year, whatever we contribute, is it going to take away from what funding might be provided by the state?
Correct. That is its own separate, so there is a reporting mechanism, that, that's really where this, this, this information came from. There is a reporting mechanism where the district reports back to the state and says, here's how much was actually reported. It's called the end of year report, goes in, it's usually due in October. But that has nothing to do with the calculation that they do. The calculation they do is always just based on what is the, what do you have for enrollment in your district? What are the dollar amounts per student? And then the calculations we said, what are the property taxes, what are the income taxes, what are the standard calculations? Yep? So you do not harm yourself by funding over, over what you're required to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Now I'm looking at this chart that's going to bother me, but those are FY22 numbers on the bottom. They, they have shifted a bit again because of the Student Opportunity Act. I will redo this one before I send it to you. So that is really honestly the story that I have for you this evening, and I'm happy to take whatever other questions you may have. With, incidentally, the ongoing caveat that it's entirely possible that you may walk away and have questions tomorrow, which is why I give you my contact information.
So I, I do have a question, only because this is my first rodeo on the school committee, right?
Yeah.
So typically, you know, obviously we're in a receivership right now, so he's running the show and making the decisions in the budget and stuff like that. Typically, in a, in a school district that's run by the school committee and superintendent and locally, the superintendent would be providing us with this information, presenting it to us, and then we'd be making decisions like, okay.
Yeah, so the, the way that the budget cycle works for most districts is that the superintendent makes a proposed, presents a proposed budget to the school committee. It then is deliberated by the school committee. School committees do have cost center authority in Massachusetts, which means that they can say at the sort of, you know, 10,000 foot level or so, okay, we want to spend a little bit more on teachers, and we're going to take the money out of professional development, we're going to move it from one place to another. Once the school committee has made those decisions and votes to pass their budget, their bottom line budget then gets submitted to the town side, and the town then deliberates as to if they're going to fund what the school committee has asked for or not, with the caveat of the state does set a minimum as to what the state, what the, the town is required to fund. I will say that the state will not ignore, but they'll only send nasty letters so long as they're funding within 5%. Honestly, that's highly, highly unusual. Most, most towns and cities fund well over their foundation budget. And then that effectively then would go back to the school side, the superintendent implements the budget as it has been passed. The school committee monitors that over the course of the year. Best practice is for the finance department to be reporting out to the school committee on a quarterly basis as to effectively, so we're implementing the budget, here's what's going on with that, here are the things we're noticing, and is running projections over the course of the year to say that as we're present, as we're running this, we have vacancy factors, like we have teachers we didn't employ, so there's, we're spending less money in teaching, but we're noticing we're going to need to spend more money over here. Any transfers that happen to the cost center level are required to go through the school committee by, by DOR regulation. And then there will be again, generally a, sort of a summing up towards the end of the year, because part of what you should be doing in the course of the year, as the school committee is getting those reports, is kind of applying that information for the next year, right? We funded this a little high, we funded this a little low, we're noticing as we're having reports about particular things, we should be putting more money towards particular things. And really, all of those pieces should be coming together as you're putting your budget together.
Excellent.
I'm glad you asked that question.
Thank you.
You have a question?
No, right now. You got a hand over here?
Yeah, I just had a question. I know that one topic that's come up for us a little bit in the last couple of months is the... is the, the reality of building maintenance.
Yep.
And the fact that that doesn't really factor into our minimum required spending for the state, from what I understand, as far as the, the minimum local contributions, and that our state funding can't be used to fund building maintenance.
Um, so I think that probably what you're being told is about capital spending. So once thing, once there are repairs or spending that needs to happen on buildings that hits a particular dollar threshold, it flips over from being operations and maintenance, which is the category within the foundation budget, which does, which absolutely is part of your operating budget, which absolutely is something that you can use Chapter 78 on, and honestly should be happening. But once you're doing something like repairing a roof, making a major investment in technology, that is capital spending. In a municipal school district, that is the responsibility of the town. So anything on that side of the, the carryover should be coming from the town. There absolutely though should be operational and maintenance funding that's coming out of the basic operational budget of the, of the town, of the school district. And in your case, that is 75% coming from the state.
Okay. So I think the concern that I've heard expressed, or maybe that I just kind of felt myself, was that if our required local spending amount is going up, that tends to make our ability to do things like repair roofs, which we desperately need to do right now. So our ability to actually repair those roofs is sort of going down because our required spending per student is going up. And I could be misunderstanding this scenario.
No, you're not misunderstanding. I think that two things I would say, and, and let me just sort of be completely honest. I say this partly honestly with my other hat on, which is a Worcester School Committee member, where I hear that argument a lot in Worcester too. We also are predominantly state-funded. And I hear a lot about how operational and capital or, and conflict. I think there's two things. The first thing is that districts that look like Southbridge are running almost a capital repairs deficit because of those two things that we talked about, right? So the ongoing underfunding at the state level, the undercalculation effectively at the state level of how much money you needed in order to run your district, which led to this giant law being passed that revised how things were. I didn't actually dig into your actual spending, I could at some point, of say 2015, 2016, 2017. I'm willing to bet, having done a lot of work in districts that look like yours, the part of the way that Southbridge was balancing the books was that you probably have been underfunding operations. And I don't say that as a critique, I say that as someone who's been on a school committee that's voted budgets, that has been funding facilities at about 60% of what it was supposed to be. And we did that to keep teachers in the classroom. What that means is that you effectively kind of have this maintenance backlog that goes back probably at least 10 years and maybe more than that. Part of SOA should be making up for some of that on an operational basis. So I am prepared to argue to districts that as much as everyone's going to be like, new programs, and we need more teachers, I mean, if you've been running a maintenance backlog, some of that money probably needs to be pushed back into the operations and maintenance budget. However, on the other side, we all know what happens if you don't do maintenance over a decade. Eventually, things build up to a point where they're no longer a maintenance issue, they're now like a replacement or renovation kind of issue. And that absolutely is the case with a number of districts like this, of, well, now you're going to have to replace the whole roof, because we didn't do the work 10 years ago, because we didn't have the money 10 years ago, because we were trying to make sure we had enough teachers. Some of that can be accelerated repair questions, right? MSBA program for windows, roof doors, and boilers. That is not going to be the whole answer, though. Some of that is that the state says that, that towns are supposed to balance both of these needs. And I will say that I think that the state probably looks at districts that are 75% state-funded and say, you know, you're only funding 25% of your, of your district's operational budget. Having you then pick up the capital is, we think, a fair calculation. Now, we can argue that the reason that you're 75% state-funded is because you don't actually have quite as many local resources. But I think that that probably is the balance the state sets, because everybody has the same deal in terms of capital. It's always the municipal sides that have to pick it up, unless you're a regional district, in which case you still have to get it from your municipals, but you have to do it collectively. But I'm glad you asked that question, because I think that that, that backlog has been, not invisible, but it's been something that's been sort of lurking behind the foundation budget underfunding, that districts have been just sort of seeing happen and aren't necessarily aware of the money issue that's kind of behind it. Yes?
Could you explain the suit, the, that extra new money, the student opportunity funds or grants or?
Sure. So effectively, so in 1993, there was a lawsuit that the state lost that was brought by the, by a student in the city of Brockton, that effectively said, under the state constitution, Chapter, Chapter 2, Section 5, the responsibility for ensuring that every child in Massachusetts has a public education is assigned to the state. Now, in 1993, we largely had a locally funded system. So try to imagine, right, Massa, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has been saying to Southbridge, you have to spend $31 million on schools, but you're only going to have to kick in 8.3. Imagine if instead you had to fund, somehow come up with the full 31 million. That was kind of the reality that, that most places like this were facing in the late 80s. And so the state said, you got to fix it. That's how we got Chapter 70. That's how we got this calculation. However, part of the law was supposed to be, or rather is, it was written into it, it just didn't happen. They were supposed to go back and look at the numbers every five years, because stuff happens, like health insurance is significantly, going up at significantly higher rates than anything else is. The difference between 1993 and now in terms of how we teach special education students, you know, enormously different, and more expensive, better, but more expensive. We have many more students who are English learners, and they don't all come to us in kindergarten. There's a bunch of changes that have happened. So that had built up over time. MASCE, MASSS, MTA, AFT have been, had been complaining to the state. Eventually, we managed in 2015 to get them to put together, 2014, put together a commission that actually looked at the problem. And they came out with a report in 2015 that said, yeah, you're right, we're underfunding Massachusetts education by somewhere between $1 and $2 billion a year at the Commonwealth level. Yes, exactly. Now, the trick was that if you were a district, not like Southbridge, and not like Worcester, you were kind of going along and saying, okay, well, this is what the state calculates, but that's not how much it costs to run our schools, like, we need to actually fund them more than that. That's how we actually got this 31% over foundation number, is a whole lot of towns sitting in town meetings saying, yeah, we're voting up the school budget, because otherwise we're not going to have enough English teachers, we're not going to be able to fix the roof, we're not going to be able to buy enough books. If you were a town like Southbridge, you couldn't fund, you know, more than what you were being asked for, you couldn't actually pick up the additional amount. So there was this growing distance between Brockton and Lowell and Full River and Pittsfield and Springfield and much of the rest of the state, because those were the districts who couldn't make up the difference. So the report came out in 2015, and then we had to wait and fight for four years to finally get the law through that did those four things. Increased the percentage, increase in health insurance, increased the, the ongoing dollar amount increases in English, for English learners, reworked how we do low income, particularly pushing towards the higher poverty. And then, what's the fourth one? Low-income English learners, special education, health insurance. Yes, all of it. So special education, also, you saw that percentage going up in terms of special education. It had a bunch of other stuff in it too. It looks at charter schools, it looks at rural schools, had the, let's go look at how we calculate poverty study in it. That got signed in November of 2019. The first budget that it was supposed to be implemented in was the one that was coming out in January of 2020. Governor Baker proposed a budget in January of 2020 that had it in it, and then COVID hit in March of 2020. And then we didn't have a state budget until October. So there wasn't any implementation that year. We just got implementation this current year for that first step. So those changes were supposed to be phased in over seven years. What instead happened was the legislature said, we kind of skipped a year here already, and that's not great for our districts. So they decided, they compressed the timeline, and they're now phasing it in over six. So we've had our first fiscal year, for next fiscal year, we'll have the next sort of one-sixth of the implementation. And then, in fact, that's why I'm talking about five years, five years from now, it's supposed to be fully phased in. So it is intended particularly for districts like Southbridge, because the, the dollar amount change that's the biggest is actually that poverty calculation. I'm glad you asked that question. It matters a lot to you all, actually.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Where does the money come from when the student goes to another school? Where does that money come from?
So for, for where? Because that's actually three different answers, depending on what kind of school they go to.
Okay, like charter school or?
Sure. So if you have a student that goes to a charter school, the way that charter schools work under the revised 2011 law is that effectively the foundation budget for that student go, take, comes out of your Chapter 78 and goes with that student to the charter school. So if that student is a kindergarten who's an English learner, who's also low-income, that is the dollar amount that gets pulled out of your Chapter 78 and goes with that student. The thing that the state then does on top of that, though, is the state has a reimbursement formula that says, for the first year that that student is gone, you get 100% reimbursement as if that student is still there. It then phases out over the next four years at 25%. What part of actually the Student Opportunity Act was that districts were noticing that they managed to always fund that 100%, and then didn't fund any of the out years. And the commitment now from the state is that they're going to fund, progressively fund those out years too. So the trick is always to remember that it's only for increases in your charter tuition that you're getting reimbursed, you're never going to get reimbursed the full charter amount, and that was never the intention. So that's charter schools. Choice, if you've got a student from here that goes to the next town over, that's $5,000. So that just comes out of your Chapter 78, it goes into a separate special revenue account for that district, into their school choice account. But it's always $5,000 regardless of who the student is, unless they're a special education student, that actually gets calculated between your business offices. The third thing is BayPath. Because you are a member of BayPath, you actually have a school committee member that serves on the BayPath school committee, their, their calculation actually works very similar to how yours does. That whole calculation we did in terms of how much can your town contribute to the foundation budget is done for every town that belongs to BayPath. And then based on the students that are then going to BayPath, and the ability of the town to contribute to, for each of those students, there's a foundation budget that's put together for BayPath, which says, here's the local contribution, which is all the local contributions of all the towns, and then the state fills in the gap between that and their foundation budget. Now, their school committee can vote something higher, and nearly every regional vote tech does, which then gets added to the assessment that comes back to the town. I think those are the three things. The only other thing, the fourth thing would be that if you had a vocational student that wanted a program that wasn't covered by BayPath, they actually get charged tuition, which is assessed by the, by the vote tech they're going to, and that just actually comes straight back to the town, which also has to pay transportation. That happens sometimes too.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions?
Really quick. So the numbers that you had up there earlier of Southbridge students, did that include students who are choicing out and going to charter schools? It did.
So for your, no. For your foundation budget, your foundation budget includes your choice students and your charter students. So that calculation I did, which was like the red bars, which said the $31 million, that includes those. The district enrollment, where it was just the line, that's just K through 12 Southbridge Public Schools. I pulled that off your district profile page. The, the way to be able to tell the difference is if I'm citing the district profile page, that's just K through 12. If I'm citing the Chapter 70 calculation, the Chapter 70 calculation always includes the charter and choice.
Are there any further questions?
Great. So what I will do is I will first of all fix that last slide, which is going to bother me quite a bit, and make sure that it's all actually FY '21. And then I will send it along to Andrew, so that he then can share it with you. But please do, as you think about this some more, as you're moving forward, if you have additional questions, or want to even have me explain something to you again, please feel free to do that. That's the, first of all, while you have field directors from MASCE, and secondly, is, is honestly part of what my purview is for MASCE, which is making sure that we've got members who are very well-grounded in school finance.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome.
All right. We're going to move on to agenda item number six, member forum. I'm going to start with Ms. Erin, and then work my way this way. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I was just going to say that we'd mentioned earlier that Martina and I did get to go visit the schools. Dr. Larr took us on a tour. We went and saw Eastford Road, West Street, and Charlton Street, as well as, kind of quickly did a little bit at Coal Ave as well. And a couple of things I noticed as we were, as we were touring there, I actually was very impressed with the student behavior overall. I felt like the, the teachers and administration were implementing some really wise student behavior expectations, some really wise ways of making sure those expectations were communicated with students, and just even with the, the little music they would play when they were ready for students to move on to something new, or different things like that, or kind of, kind of fun, and, and I thought, very helpful. It seemed like they had a good student-to-teacher ratio. I appreciated that. I thought that was very, very helpful, especially in some of the special needs classes and things like that. It seemed like they had adequate and even almost beyond what I would have expected as far as almost one-to-one in some of the really special classes. So that was impressive to me. I know last time we had a school committee meeting, one of the big things that came up was maintenance. Sorry, my mask is giving me issues here. But one of the things that in particular, as we were looking at these schools, seemed like was a huge need, and I'm not a construction person, so I'm just saying this as a very ordinary person, looking at the schools from a very ordinary person eyes, were the roofs of the elementary schools. And I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, Martina, but the roofs seemed like a very obvious need. The, the ceiling tiles are definitely curling and things like that, and you can see that those are definitely an issue and definitely need to be replaced. We probably all knew that from looking at the report anyway, but even just seeing it in person was kind of helpful. And then, as I was thinking about it later, after we went through the schools, this was actually my first time to be in the schools at all since we homeschool and everything, so it was something that I was thinking, you know, I, I wish our schools had something in particular that we could look at and say, our schools are really good at, fill in the blank. And I would love to have something that I could just fill in that blank with and feel like, we are great at this. And I know even as a parent, you always want each of your kids to have something that they feel like, wow, I'm really good at this. And that is just so encouraging for them, and you don't always want them to be comparing themselves with other people, but still, you want them to have something that you feel like they know that they're good at. And I would love to see us as a school district have something that we feel like, we are good at this. And I'm not sure if it's ever going to be math, honestly. I, I would love to see us improve in that, but, but as I was thinking about it later, I thought, you know, one thing that it seemed like we kind of are good at is our dual-language program. And that's something that, yes, we have a ton of English learners. We also have a ton of kids that are no longer English learners, who have become proficient in English, but still have that bilingual ability. And I know that some of the teachers that we talked to were talking about the dual-language program and whether they should expand it beyond, I don't know if it was fifth grade or, or what exactly we were talking about, but my concern initially was that they would be looking at that as a... looking at that as a handicap and kind of encouraging the kids to continue to think of themselves as handicapped. And I realized later that I don't think that was what the teacher was thinking at all. I think she was thinking that they kind of had a gift. They have two languages that they know very well, and that would enable them to be more qualified for jobs and get better paid down the road and some of those things, and that she was actually trying to encourage that gift and foster that gift by allowing them to have that dual-language program going a little bit further and extending further than fifth grade or whatever it was. And I was thinking, you know, wouldn't that be cool if in our district, all the students had the opportunity to be bilingual and could participate in the dual-language program? And I don't know even what the current requirements are for participating in that, but that's something, as a parent, that I think I would love to see my kids be bilingual, and maybe other parents would, too. And I think that's something that other districts might look at us and say, oh, yeah, I could imagine Southbridge being really good at a dual-language program, because we have that, I don't know, reputation maybe is the word, already of being a district that has a need for that and has had to work on that and kind of build that dual-language program already. So, I don't know, it just occurred to me that that would be something that maybe our district could really capitalize on in the future and build ourselves a little bit of a reputation as maybe a, something that kids could actually move into a linguistics career or something from that foundation that they're getting here at our school. The other thing that I emailed Dr. Villar after our tour was that I would love to encourage parents who are choicing their kids out of the district to maybe come observe their kids' class before they decide to choice out, just so that they know firsthand what exactly our school is before they decide to choice somewhere else. And that might not change anything, but at least they would know for themselves and not just be deciding based on a story they heard from someone about some bad day that happened sometime. So, anyway, that was it.
All right. Thank you. Michelle.
I also went on the tour. The problem of our roofs is going to come up this year for budget. I know one thing about roofs and water heaters, since I just bought a brand-new water heater this morning, just what I wanted for Christmas. Nothing fixes roofs and water heaters and boilers and windows and doors except money. You can have the best educational system, but if the roof is leaking, you will get black mold, and if you get black mold, you will have to remediate, and that will cost us way more money. Also, I was pleasantly surprised at how well-behaved our students were. I've always said that. You know, I taught in the school system for years, they were never that bad. I mean, every once in a while, it seemed like everybody had a bad day all at once, but they were never bad. I never was once afraid or anything of that nature. Our kids are, they're working so hard. I was just, I was pleasantly surprised, really, at how hard our kids and our teachers were working. So give them a little credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaPire.
It's just nice to hear these positive things that you got out of the tour, and we need to hear a lot more of that. It seems like you just hear the negative things, and it's tough for the teachers to hear, it's tough on the students, and there are a lot of good things that are going on. My grandson had started sixth grade at the middle school, and he is on the Star Ambassador team. And they have worked on, they write Big Bunny gathering food to donate, and they do different things at school that are positive things that they're working on together, and I just think that we need to hear more of that type of thing. And it's just good. I was glad to hear these things and about the kids and behavior and all. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And we'll round it out with Mr. Messier.
So I also got, had the chance to meet with Dr. Villar. I met with Dr. Villar yesterday, and I was able to tour the junior high, the high school, Charlton Street School, and also West Street School. And so I was able to, I share in the excitement that I had about, you know, the behavior of the students, because I feel like when I just hear what's going on from others instead of being there, you don't always get the full picture. So I felt, you know, while at the same time, I did see some situations where behavior management systems were being used, specifically at West Street School, it was great, the teachers did a great job, the administration did a great job, and it didn't impact any learning whatsoever. The student that I observed did a great job overcoming what he was dealing with as a result of the behavior management systems that are in place. I was really impressed with the attentiveness of students in classrooms. I saw, there's a program or a class once a day in Charlton Street School and West Street School, I believe, it's called WIN. So it's a period of day where, it's called what I need, and so students get a chance to go where they need to be. It also happens at the junior high, I believe, and I saw one classroom that had a full class, and all the students were doing different things, and they were on their devices, and they were talking with their teachers, different teachers in different places. So all these kids are getting different instruction from different people, and some of them are reading, some of them are doing math, some of them are doing history, some of them are working with programs that have been purchased to get more instruction on things that they actually need, which is fantastic, right? So that's a great, a great way to use that time, which I was really pleased about. I felt, when I went to the junior high, I felt like there was great structure. They have a great advisory program that's really well-organized, and it's helpful to teachers, because it's not like a PD that they have to do, and they're not questioning what they have to do in that advisory, because all of the plans are laid out for them. There's an advisory leader, leadership position, and that person who's responsible organizes a Google classroom and sends out all the advisory stuff to the teachers through that Google classroom. So it's really well-organized, and it takes a lot of the pressure off the teacher in figuring out what they need to do with students during that either instructional time or just getting-to-know-you time. So there's all sorts of different opportunities in that, which I was really pleased about. One thing that I feel like Dr. Villar pointed out that I feel like is worth mentioning is, is that there's learning happening in these classrooms. There's learning, there's participation of students, and that is something that needs to be echoed, because when there's learning and there's structure, as I saw, there's new opportunities. So, for example, one of the things that Dr. Villar and I talked about was, how great is it that we have a high school and a junior high together to give high school students an opportunity to tutor young people when we have, when we're in the place to do so, right? So we're getting there, so we're on track to give students more opportunities, and I think that was the big thing. I do also feel the same way that you all do about the maintenance issues in the buildings. I went to school through, well, through Eastford Road, Charlton Street School, and West Street School, and there's a lot to be done there. Feel like the, when you walk into a school and things look right for kids and things are in the right places, and it just gives you a whole different feeling about education and being there, right? I'm not saying it's got to be a Rolls-Royce, right? That's not what I'm saying, but, you know, if you've got leaking in a classroom from the roof, and issues in the roof, or you've got drafts because windows are old, it's an uncomfortable feeling for students, and I think, obviously, all of those things take money. And I'm hopeful that we can make that happen. The last thing I just want to point out that I almost forgot about, culture-wise, one of the things that I was able to observe, the principal at West Street School, was going around to classrooms and having a great time with the kids, making gingerbread houses before the holidays, which was a hit, and she was having a great time, and the kids were having a great time, and I was really happy to see that. So.
Thank you. All right. Our next regularly-scheduled school committee meeting would be on January 11th of 2022. So, and that would be at 7 o'clock here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
Do I have a second? All in favor? The vote is unanimous of all present. This meeting is adjourned.[1786.13][1786.13][applause]